The attendance. We'll call it together this meeting of the library board and take attendance with a couple members online if you would say your name.
This is Michael, but I'm online.
Thank you.
Anna Volotion, also online.
And person, Barb and myself are here and so is Janie. Our first order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from our last meeting. Janie emailed those out just a little bit ago. Have you seen those? And then our agenda for today as well. So if you have an opportunity to take if you get those and then we'll take a motion to approve.
I just have a question.
Yes.
They look fine to me. Remember, when it says role was done, do you need to record who was actually here? I mean, all five of us were present.
Yes.
Do you have to do that?
Yes, let's, let's add that. So it just has everyone's name specifically first. So I'll make a note of that really quick.
That was my suggestion. Is there anything else? I'm an approval of the minute on May fourteenth. You have my motion. Is there a second?
This is Michael second.
You all in favor say aye.
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 So the meeting minutes and agenda are approved and we'll move on to citizen comments. Janie, there's no one here. Is there anyone online?
No, I don't have anyone online at this time. We will have another opportunity for citizen comment at the end of the meeting in case anyone joins.
So we will move on to reports and our city administrator, Mark Packery.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I don't have a formal report, just a couple of items to brief the board on. If you were in attendance at the last council meeting, you heard our updated briefing on the facility master plan, which included some discussion about the library project. And I say that only to remind the board that our plan right now is to bring back options that council directed us to put together through our contract with Turner and Townsend area at the July fifteenth council meeting. So that is currently our schedule. We don't see any reason why at this point we can't meet that schedule. So our plan is to bring those options forward to the council for their review and discussion on July the fifteenth. And beyond that, we were planning to have some public engagement and it probably is more appropriate for Janie to kind of walk through what that may look like. We wanted to give the council an opportunity to see those options first and ask questions and state preferences and then downstream of that, bring public engagement into the process to kind of refine those down to a preferred option that we would potentially move forward with. So that's right now the, the plan and the schedule. Other than that, I don't know that I have any other things to brief to the board. And if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you have a question, Michael? Very nice. Thank you. We do not have Brad Hamlet here today for the Friends group report. So Jan, you will operate that.
Say I can. That wasn't a meeting.
Yeah, please do. Please do.
We'll do that. We had the last week in May and coming up this weekend. It's Friday and Saturday. It's the Friends book sale, which actually the date is who the third in this one needs. And then planning is well underway for the big fundraiser, the soiree, which will be held on July sixteenth. And they were pretty close to already selling out tickets at the end of May. So I don't know how many are still remaining, but I'm pretty sure that will sell out for that. And I'm glad it's supposed to be nice weather this weekend, not raining.
For sure. We have been inundated with books at the library for the book sale. This year especially, we just always have so many books coming in. But yesterday, our table was just completely buried with books for the book sale. I don't know that all of those books will make it in this round because it's in two days, but they will hopefully make it in the next round for sure.
I think those were the two important things.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Janie, the director's report.
Okay, so I have a couple of things to brief you guys on. The first is that we are currently hiring for a children's librarian. Ms. Erin, who is our children's associate, is still with us. She has just asked to move down to part-time hours. So in the past, we have had a full-time children's librarian and then someone who assists like twenty to thirty hours a week. That kind of changed during COVID. So with her wanting to step back, that gives us the opportunity to bring our staff back up to, I guess we would call it, full capacity. So we'll have a full-time children's librarian and then Ms. Erin will be working thirty hours a week assisting with all of our children's programming. We posted the position almost two weeks ago. I'm hoping to have someone in place in August so that they can start, kind of start with the ground running in September with back-to-school programs. So I'll update you guys as we have more details on that. Our summer reading program starts next week. We always start it when school gets out. So this week, this year is a little bit different because schools get out on a Tuesday. So we are starting summer reading next Monday, the sixteenth. The theme this year is Color Your World. So kind of an artist's coloring theme. I have some of the graphics in the presentation. I'm going to show you guys in a minute. So you'll get to see a little bit more. But we normally will hand out reading logs for everyone. So we have a zero to five age group, six to twelve age group, a teen age group, and then an adult's age group. And they, it's a paper reading log. They mark off when they do their reading and they get to come in for free prizes during the summer. But that's the kids' version. And the adults, they have to read four books. There's also other things on that. We learned the average adult reads six books over the course of the year. So or in like two months felt a little bit squished. So on all of the reading logs, including the kids, we have other challenges, like if they attend a library program, they can mark something off. If they try a new recipe, they can mark something off. If, since it's an art theme, if you create a work of art, you can mark something off. So just particularly for the adults, we wanted to kind of make it a little bit less of a barrier to entry to get some more adult participants. So yeah, we're going to be busy at the library. Next week on Wednesday is the city staff barbecue at Orchard Park. So we'll be closed for the morning on Wednesday. So staff can attend the barbecue. And then Thursday, all of the city facilities will be closed for Juneteenth. So our first week of summer reading is just like a little bit of a different schedule than what we normally have. But kids and adults can come in all summer and pick up reading logs. So it's not just like only one day or something like that. As far as kind of piggyback off what Mark was saying, I've been attending, every, every two to three weeks, we've had a meeting with B C R A, which is our architectural firm on the library project at Town Square. We will be bringing something back on July fifteenth. Right now, we kind of have three different design iterations. So we're hoping to get some feedback from council on July fifteenth that we can narrow down. And then we're planning to do a community open house at the library where city members of the public can come and see, you know, conceptual drawings of what the exterior would look like, the whole layout of the park, what that would look like. Give them some options on that and then some options on the design layouts to kind of get public input on what, which design they prefer. So that'll be sometime after July fifteenth. We haven't nailed down the date on that.
Janie, a question?
Go.
The staff barbecue at Orchard Park. What day was that on? Just so I can.
Yeah, it's Wednesday, July eighteenth.
Excellent.
All right, June eighteenth.
My question was about Juneteenth. Do you have any books at the library that you put out about?
Yes. So over the last few years, we've gotten more books on Juneteenth. So we have picture books, chapter books, and then some adult kind of history of Juneteenth books as well. Yes. So yeah, we always try to put books up around whatever holiday with our display.
And while you were talking about the designs that are going to come to city council, I was curious about the survey that went out and what the feedback that came out through the survey was?
Yes. Normally they give council like a very detailed report on it. And I'm sure that's something we could share with the board as well. Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're still going through. But yes, once we're completed with the, not collection is complete, but the analysis, we would share that with everybody.
Yes. Total per survey responses, six hundred and ninety-nine fully completed, like every single question answered. And then I think it was like seven hundred forty-three, I don't know, high seven hundreds of like somebody who had at least stopped on one response. So none of the questions are like required to answer. So yeah, we had a really, really great turnout with the survey. We were really pleased. And that's everything I had for this, this report.
Sure. Okay, so we will move on to business and the annual report that's going to city council for this week.
Yes. So I'm going to share my screen. Jennifer has been assisting me with this annual report. And I wanted to show you guys and get your feedback on if there's anything else you think we should add. Let me make it bigger. I'm going to go to present. Oh, there's the present button. There you go. Okay, so this is our annual report that we are required to give to council once a year. We switched it to providing this report in June because it falls right after I have to submit all of our statistics to the state. So it made, it makes sense timing wise. In the past, we would do it at the end of the year, but the numbers were never fully completed because, you know, we still had more days left in the year. So this is a fully fleshed out report. Okay. So I have these stats which you guys have seen previously. There are some statistics were required to put in reports as far as the ordinance goes. So that includes the number of library cards, the number of visitors. I included the meeting reservations and then our physical book usage versus ebook usage because that's something that council has been interested in lately. So I'll go over those numbers briefly. And then we are required to provide the details of our physical collection. And now I'm seeing that I'm still missing two numbers. So good review. Have those two numbers. So we're required to let them know what our physical collection is looking at. The main thing I want to point out is on our book collection, our physical book collection, you can see that the number is, you know, only changed by like a hundred. And that's because we have no further room for expansion in the current library. So we are basically at the tipping point of if we bring something in, we have to get rid of something. So the current population growth, we just got new numbers from city hall last week. Our current population is fourteen thousand one hundred. So our, the number of books that we should be providing to our community right now are at twenty-eight thousand. So currently we are three thousand below what our usage, what our collection size should be for a community of our size. So when we're looking at build out of, you know, is it twenty-two thousand, Mark?
The current build out projection is twenty-two thousand.
Yes. So we would need a current, a physical collection of forty-four thousand items per capita. So we are, how to speak. This is our electronic collection. It is growing healthy. We have really great usage on it. And of course, because it's electronic, we have plenty of space for it. So these are materials that we share with the rest of the state of Washington. So everyone pays into it and all of the patrons in Washington can use it. So there's that collection size. And then these are our operating expenses for 2024. So our twenty twenty-four budget was seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and sixteen thousand. We expended six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Now I'm seeing another dollar sign. And we made a whopping twenty-nine hundred dollars in fines and fees. So these would be for lost or damaged books exclusively, since we don't charge overdue fines. So just items that were damaged. So total property tax funded is six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Our technology update. So we talked about this at the last meeting and you guys gave me some really good tips that I incorporated. So we are at three thousand two hundred thirty-seven computer session in 2024 with eighteen hundred and five computer sessions in 2023. So our usage has gone up significantly. The current challenge that we have is that we only have four computers that people are able to use at the library and we don't have any room to expand or add additional machines. As you guys saw on our on tour last week, there's nowhere to put additional computers. And there is a lack of privacy. So if someone is, you know, you're sitting right next to three other people and if you need to make a phone call to your bank, like everyone can hear your conversation. Everyone can see what's going on as they walk by. So if we were into, in a new space, we'd want to incorporate no more carols or more privacy screens to help. And we would want to have at least eight computers in the new, in a new library space. So double the machines that we have right now. The other big challenge we have is a lack of power outlets throughout the library, which makes studying and working hard for our patrons in 2025, when everyone has a laptop, everyone has a phone and they want to be able to plug in and charge. So right now it's, they can sit down at the table, but once their computer dies, like they have to leave. Because we don't have enough power outlets throughout the floor and on tables throughout the library. Are youth programming attendants? So we are, our attendance for 2024 was twelve thousand nine hundred and nineteen. It's up four thousand from last year. We are really, really thrilled with the attendance that we've had at programs this year. We had, our, our storytime usage saw the most significant growth. We had an increase in 2024 of two thousand more people who came to storytime throughout the year. So this kind of leads me into my next slide. We, our biggest challenge right now is our parking and our meeting space. So when people come to storytime, they are parking in the parking lot. They're parking next door at the police station. They are parking along Madsen because we do not have enough parking spaces for the number of families that want to come to storytime. Our meeting room can accommodate thirty-nine people and we are consistently getting over seventy people at storytime. So basically double the amount that we have space for in next room. Today I hosted storytime and it was seventy-two. So huge attendance. The other thing that is a challenge for us is that we don't have a dedicated teen space in the library. So right now, when teens come to the library, they don't have a place where they can hang out. You know, they come, they can get their books in the teen area, but it's the only workspace that we have in the library. It's the only place that people can sit down, like, sit down with their laptop, have a group meeting. And teens don't want to hang out with the adults. They also don't want to go into the kids' room and like hang out with the kids or babysit the kids. So as you guys know, a lot of libraries are very close to like the middle school or the high school because it's a safe place for the kids to go after school. You know, if your parents are gone from three to six, like what are you doing? The library is a safe place that they can go and hang out where there's some supervision and they can have snack and they can do a fun activity. Or they're driving around town on golf carts, doing who knows what. So we would love to be able to provide a real dedicated teen space in our library for the teens exclusively, where they can do their programs. And I feel like that would give them a better feeling of ownership of the library if they have their own space where they felt safe and hanging out with their friends. One of the other opportunities that we're taking away from this year is last year, we implemented teen programming every single week. So every Tuesday was Teen Tuesday. And as you know, we offer storytime four days a week. So something that we're looking at for 2025 this fall is offering consistent weekly kids programs. So it would be for our school-aged kids after school. We're thinking Wednesdays, they'll come to the library every single week and have a program that they can do. So just offering that consistency to all ages of youth is something that we're trying to implement consistently for 2025. So this is the graphic I was telling you about. This is our theme for summer reading, Color Our World. We love the artwork this year. It's an artist's art theme. And like I told you guys, summer reading is starting next week. So I'm gonna, you know, invite council and let them know that that starts next week, you know, as we're presenting to them. So I think I have two more slides. So this is our total program attendance. And as you can see, I like I added the numbers on here. So I'm going to go back and do that on the youth page. But in 2024, we offered three hundred and six free programs to our community over the year. And this was achieved by a team of three people. So Michaela as the adult teen in the delivery, Erin as our children's associate, and then assisted when I can by myself. And so our total attendance for the year, this is for teens, adults, everybody, is twelve thousand nine hundred and nineteen, which is incredible. So I'm really pleased with the number of programs that we were able to provide to our community last year. And all of them are free and open to everyone. The last thing I had, let's see, is volunteer hours. So we have two volunteer groups at the library. We have our teen advisory group. This is mainly high school students, but we do have some older middle school students that participate as well. In 2024, they offered two hundred and fifty-five and a half hours of volunteer work at the library. They assisted, they developed a steam camp that we did for a whole week in July last year. They also assisted with the Halloween party as far as planning, decorating, setting things up, cleaning stuff up. They volunteer at a lot of Ms. Erin's kids' programs and help her set things up, but also help the kids with the different activities that they're doing. They also assist with summer reading and then any, you know, cleaning tasks that we have at the library. A lot of them set up displays in the teen section of the library each month. So they did an incredible job last year. Lastly, is our adult volunteers. We have at least one volunteer that comes in each day of the week, each day of the week, Monday through Friday. Some days we'll have two, one that comes in the morning, one that comes in the afternoon. Some of our volunteers are just once a week and some of them come in multiple days, like Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and volunteer at the library. So total volunteer hours last year were six hundred and eighty-eight, which is incredible. We love our volunteers and we couldn't do it without them.
That doesn't include the friends, but.
No, that's just like our exclusive volunteers who shelf and hold holds and do other tasks for us. So yeah, it doesn't include the friends, which is a lot. They provide an incredible number of volunteer hours as well, for sure. Lastly, these are some new services that we are offering this year. We have brought back proctoring, which is something that we did prior to COVID and we've brought back. It's for people who need a proctored test. So that's something that Michaela offers is that you can schedule an appointment. A lot of the tests are done online, but we do have tests that still get emailed to us and then we like fax them back to SDC. So you can come in. It's for mainly online students who need supervision when they're taking a test. Michaela has also started implementing tech appointments where people can schedule a one-on-one time help with her. She does a myriad of things from like setting up a Kindle to helping someone get their book published on Amazon. Last week she helped someone who needed to learn how to use Zoom for the first time. So she walked them through it and then they actually like got on different computers and like practiced how to use Zoom. So it's just one, it's by request. And it's whatever topic that they need to help with as far as technology. She does also offer like once a month tech hours in evening on a Thursday that we advertise. So it is one-on-one and advertised hours as well. And then lastly, our mobile printing that we use, that we do through the printer-on app. So people are able to print right from their phone. Yes. So that's everything that I have. Can you guys think of anything that I might be missing that we maybe want to include in the annual report? Okay. So me and Jennifer will be attending to the council on Tuesday at the meeting. Yes.
Okay, thank you. That looks really good. That will be longer soon, next week. So that takes us into action items. And reviewing the circulation policy.
Yes, I'm going to pull up the deadlines that I had. These were also posted in the agenda. So people in the community have the ability to read through them and make public comment if they desire. Let me zoom in. So it's right here in red. Claims returned, claims never had. A claims return occurs when a borrower's, borrower's account lists an item that the borrower claims has been returned or never borrowed. Borrowers are limited to three claims returns or claims never had for the Liberty Lake library, sorry, for Liberty Lake library items. If the claims returns never had is for materials borrowed from a C I N library, it is up to the lending library whether they will allow the claims returned claims ever have. So if everything looks good, we can entertain a motion for this.
In that line, that says borrowers are limited to three, then the assumption is if there's a fourth, that's where they are financially responsible for that.
Yes. But the nice thing about the software is if that item is found, like say, a year later, we find it underneath the shelf in the back corner somewhere and we check it in, it is able to remove it off their account, account. So in that case, it would go down to two or one or zero. So that's a really nice thing about this software that we have now. So if there's a mistake, it's they are not being penalized for it. Any other questions on the vote bit? So I'm going to scroll up to the agenda because I had written out what the action item is right here. Approve the edits, the library circulation policy and recommend that they be sent to council for approval. So.
So is there a motion for that? So you have a second? Or second pick? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I think you were on there too.
Yes, I said aye, I think.
The motion passes to approve the edits to the library circulation policy and recommend that they be sent to council for approval.
So our next step is we're going to go to the council meeting next week. But I'm not planning to include this in that since it is our annual report. My plan would to be to bring it back at another council meeting where we could focus just on the policy, since this is our first policy that we're bringing forward to the council for approval. So I thought we could make a presentation and talk them through this policy and then see if they have any questions. Just like I think we talked about at the last meeting. So that this could be the full, the focus of that presentation, if that makes sense. Does that sound okay to everyone else?
Are there any questions about that timeline? Okay.
Okay. We're cruising around a lot today.
I hope that brings us to citizen comments again. Do we have anyone online?
Sorry, I'm switching. Okay. No, the only people online are Michael and Anna. And we don't have anyone in chambers today.
So if there is nothing left, do we need to move to adjourn the meeting?
Yes. Our next meeting will be July ninth. Does anyone have a conflict and this is going to be like downtown for summer vacation?
Yeah.
No, that works.
All right, then I will take a motion to adjourn our meeting. One thirty.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, we'll see you guys next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next month. Thank you so much.